And like I said, we'll do the, I mean, second shift right now is running anywhere between eighteen to twenty-five calls for service on second shift. So they do, they simply don't have time to set up and run radar. I'm not saying, you know, if it dies down, they could, they'd do that. So you give me a time where the speeders are higher, are they more, I mean, they're, they're between two and ten, I would be my guess. Maybe in the morning, in the afternoon?
No, in the evening.
About ten in the evening though, about two in the morning.
Okay.
They come around, I live there on the corner of Harvester's. And they come around fifty and sixty mile an hour.
Yeah.
I got them driving through my yard.
Okay.
And it's a week.
Third shift is a little different. I, I can tell my guys, you need to go run radar in Harvester's on third shift because their call volume is not nearly as high as second shift.
You know, right past my house, it turns.
If you send a marked car down there, they're gonna slow down. But if you have somebody sitting in a couple of chase cars or something, somebody might get into that one year.
They came up, they came in one year and in a half hour, they wrote forty-five tickets.
Yeah, yeah.
They were there for money.
And we'll have to do that. We, we did it with Take Back Twenty-Two. I mean, it's something we have to organize and.
Well, that's why we're telling you about it.
Do, do, I know a lot of cities have those big, um, light up signs, you know, your speed is. Do we have one of those?
We don't have one of those in the county, but I can try to reach out and see about getting one.
Can you reach out and get one in the Harvester's? If you want to, you can set it right in my yard.
I have to reach out, try to find one. The state has them, that they loan out. There are other agencies around here that probably have them. That we can call and see about getting, see if we can borrow theirs.
What, what guys are you gonna do, set one in the, people don't care.
Well, I'm saying that you set it up so they all know their speed. And then after you take it down, the next week, you don't write warnings, you write tickets. We had a, we had a machine here telling you, we're doing thirty-five and twenty last week.
Does it count how many people speed by the house?
It will, the, the more advanced ones will count the average speed and the number of cars that come by there in a certain number, in a certain, in a timeframe, yes.
You know, when you come up water, you come up water, I've had people pass me a lot of times, I'm too slow.
Right.
How about people passing in front of his house?
I'll, I'll, I'll reach out and try to find them.
So when do you think that you'll be able to do something like this?
I'll put out, I'll put out my third shift, I'll, I'll put out the third shift tonight about to run the radar.
He'll get back.
I've had people pass me in front of his house, around the corner.
I'll put out the third shift. I just sent out a message about it, open the doors, and I'll send out the third shift right now while we're setting back here.
Let's go back to the resolution, be a business for the code of ordinances book update.
Resolution, resolution two fifty-five, two thousand twenty, a resolution authorizing the American Legal Publishing Corporation to update the city of Cretin code of ordinances and their, their published same on the city of Cretin's web domain. Whereas over the last year, the city of Cretin by and through their mayor and city council have passed new regulation, legislation resulting in the desire to add those changes to the city's code ordinance. Whereas the city of Cretin wishes to employ the services of the American Legal Publishing Corporation to update and then publish and update the city of Cretin code of ordinances. Whereas in addition to the updating of their code, the city of Cretin likes to have the code published on its web domain. Now therefore be it resolved as follows, that the mayor is authorized to execute any documents necessary to update the city of Cretin's code of ordinance and publish same on the city's web domain. Passed by the city council of the city of Cretin this eighth day of January two thousand twenty. We, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Is the, uh, will this, will we be getting our copy too, or hard copy?
Uh, if we publish it on the web, um, we'll have to pay for those copies if you want a copy, but they'll be on the website. Hundred dollars.
Hundred fifty each.
I would say it's around a hundred or something.
For the copies.
Yes.
Just being on the website, it was five hundred dollars.
And you'd be able to print that.
You can go in and just print the page you need. You don't have to print it all out.
Can I make a motion now? Make a motion.
Sorry?
A second.
I don't know how important it is to change the date from the eight to the seven.
I'll change it, Danny.
Okay.
Okay, um, so motion by Paula, second by Jennifer for the resolution two fifty-five, two thousand twenty. Danny?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Jennifer? Erle?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
New business, Council Roberts, you had something for the city?
Oh. Under new business, yes. Uh, down by the park, the old lumberyard?
Yes.
I heard there was someone interested in purchasing that property and I wanted to see where we were on that.
That's, if he decides to purchase that, Mr. Mullins, is that who you're talking about?
Uh, it was, uh, a guy with a complete auto.
Are you talking about down here across from Whoopi Ditt?
Yes.
Okay. The only information I had received is, uh, he had asked me some questions about possibly putting in a, like an all, all around.
He's talking about somebody else. He's talking about complete auto.
I haven't any information.
Um, they've asked for papers, paperwork and stuff like that and I gave them everything they asked for. I don't think they're interested anymore. Um, that's all I know.
Okay.
Have they worked for a business license?
Um, they wanted the zoning to see if they could do what they wanted to do down there.
Yeah, I had no knowledge of that. Sorry. There is somebody else possibly interested that was wanting to open like a hardware slash feed store, something like that. And, uh, he had asked for some information they could report and so forth, so.
Is that still moving forward?
I haven't heard from, for a couple of weeks now.
Who wants that?
House is carrying. Francis something.
Henry.
They had that and a bunch of land over in Owen County, Chairman Riley and all that.
And they, they come here to ask what they can put in there before they go to, and they said, you know, we'll go make an offer. We don't want to, they'll take our offer. So that's where it's, they just had to find out about zoning.
And also a new business, are you finished?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Dolls said he wanted to possibly make out of his car wash place based, uh, a storage facility. And he said he got shot down, is that true? Or did he not ask correctly or ask the wrong person?
He, he came in and talked to me about it and we looked at, at, um, conditional use and I think he would like to go through the board of adjustments.
Through the board of adjustments.
And get that, um, he hasn't asked permission. I mean, I just showed him what the ordinance was on that and then the county.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Uh, update on fiber optics, I've been talking with Council Humphries on that. They want to be here. Cincinnati Bell was the governor, you know, governor of Cretin, so they will, uh, representative will be here, Brian, that's our next council meeting at, uh, on February fourth. So, uh, it seems to me that like they've already run the lines, so they just want to reach out. I looked, Megan, I looked, uh, at the contract. Contract was from, in, when Insight had the, uh, had the contract. And it's gone through three different companies, uh, Time Warner, Spectrum. I called Spectrum, they don't have any record of a contract with the city of Cretin, so, uh, I don't see why any, any reason why the fiber optics can't move forward in, in the city. Council Lowery, did you have something?
I would like to discuss the Grant County Sheriff's Office, no offense, Todd, but this is gonna be good. Don't leave, don't.
Don't leave, I'm coming up here.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, just give it just a second and let's see if we get a call. I've had a scanner on my phone since October, around October first, that tells me when Grant County Sheriff's Office officers are in Cretin, if they're being called and they're in Grant, uh, Dry Ridge, things like that. We're experiencing some problems, not just with speeders in the Harvester's, but we are also experiencing problems with some of the, um, apartment complexes and the people in those apartment complexes in the Harvester's. Slicing tires, running around neighborhoods and harassing residents, just rude and blunt. Anyway, we, I have had to call the Grant County Sheriff's Office five times since December the eleventh. The same, hang on just a second, let me turn this off. I don't feel like we're getting the coverage that we paid for, no offense, the two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars a year. We paid for one officer, if you'll read your resolution with the, with the Grant County Sheriff's Office, it says at least one designated officer assigned and present to patrol and work inside the city of Cretin boundaries twenty-four seven. We are not getting that coverage. So today, no offense, Todd, I, um, contacted Jimmy Wells and I asked him about cameras, um, for the city. He's informed me that those cameras would run the city of Cretin to have them in the Harvester's with, um, this is not even cameras with, um, facial recognition and license plate. Those are extra. Will cost about fifty to sixty-five thousand dollars for the city of Cretin. Then we have to have someone monitor those cameras twenty-four seven. We're looking at another hundred, hundred and twenty-five thousand for, for them to be monitored. So that's not an option for us. We're paying the two ninety-two with cameras. You're looking at three hundred, we're gonna ballpark it, three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand. Um, we have got to figure out how to get better coverage through Grant County. If it cannot be through Grant County, then let's look at other options like getting our own police department, hiring from other counties, police to come in, um, using our constables to come in. We have got to get better coverage throughout, um, Cretin. So I'm laying this in all six of your laps and saying, help me figure out how to get better police coverage through Cretin. Help me. What are your suggestions?
Mayor Kate, may I speak?
Go ahead.
Have the homeowners thought about getting cameras like Pin Book has?
I just put fifteen hundred dollars worth of cameras on my home because I'm being harassed by a Harvester's resident.
Well, there you go. I was just thinking about the.
Cameras, you're going to do it.
Nextdoor.com, Nextdoor.com, is that it?
Well, but the sheriff said that if, if you call, if you see something and you call, they'll come out and look at your tape and do something about it. I, on behalf of the sheriff's department, we have seen, Wayne and I are out various hours and we have seen them setting and going through Cretin. Now, I know the Harvester's is having issues, but that's not the only thing that they're patrolling.
It's not just the Harvester's, Carolyn.
They're responsible for all of the city.
Let me tell you this, okay? I'm gonna tell you a little, a little story here. We have got a Cretin business that has told a certain person to stay off their property and they called the police on them, what, three times was it? Three times. There was an officer that was called up there and instead of that officer arresting this person for criminal trespassing, it's even our businesses that aren't getting covered. Instead of that person being arrested for criminal trespassing, he let her go and just taunt this other employee. And he let her go.
Well, the way the trespassing order, trespassing law works, I have to trespass them first at a business. I can't just walk up because you say, I don't want them here, I can't arrest them for trespassing at a public business. I have to verbally tell that person, you are no longer welcome at this business. And the next time we come back, if they're there, then they are arrestable.
Well, that person has been called and told that three times from the Grant County Sheriff's Office. I personally am at my home for harassment. The same person has been told four times to stay off my property and out of my driveway and out of my face.
Well, when we get there, are they there?
No. She, as soon as she gets there, she walks down the street and she knows cops are coming.
But I can't arrest somebody for trespassing if they're not on your property when I get there. That's not trespassing.
I'll tell you what, I guarantee you this, she will be on my property the next time you get there. I'm not saying she's gonna be.
If she's on your property the next time we get there, then we could arrest her for trespass.
I'm not saying she's gonna be conscious, but I'm telling you, she'll be there.
Okay.
Now, if she, if she has camera coverage of her property, this person's on the property, on the camera, and say she walks on, if she shows you that camera footage, that will not apply.
That, that doesn't mean that I can't go file charges on her for trespassing. Could I go arrest her for trespassing off the video evidence? I'm not gonna do that the first time. First time, I'm gonna take the report for trespass, I'm gonna take a copy of that video evidence, I'm gonna file a report, I'm gonna send it to the county attorney and either he's gonna issue a summons or he's gonna issue a warrant for that person for trespassing. And either they'll be summoned to court or there'll be a warrant issued and we'll go arrest them and then they'll have to appear in court. Am I gonna go physically arrest them because I see a video? No, but I will file charges.
So it would at least start a paper trail.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
There you go.
No, quickly, where's your bank bank?
No. I mean, and he, and here's, here's the best I can tell you. The Grant County is gonna be out over two hundred thousand dollars for these three officers that I just talked about before they ever take their first call. Okay, for three officers. If you hired three officers and started your own police department, you could not provide yourself twenty-four seven coverage with three officers. You're gonna need at least six to seven, okay, when you count vacation, when you count the forty hours of school we have to go to every year. You know, and all those things that go along with that, because we're required by KRS to go to forty hours of training every year. Every officer is required to do that. So in order to have twenty-four seven full coverage where you always have an officer in Cretin. And that's not gonna happen if that officer makes an arrest. He's outside of the city of Cretin then, as he's going to the jail, because the jail's not located in Cretin. So he's out of the city and you're paying to be the city police officer, but he's out of the city. So in order to do that, you're gonna need two officers on every shift, which puts you at, what, ten officers, give or take, to have two officers on every shift twenty-four seven.
Williams Town does it with four. I talked to Rick Skinner today, he does it with four, it costs him six hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred dollars per year.
He has more than four officers.
Yes, he has four officers that cost him six ninety-five. He has two officers that take care of the R at one seventy-eight.
Well, he has, he has seven total officers in the city of Williams Town.
He just hired the seven.
Right. He's in the academy, been in the academy for twenty-seven weeks.
But they're not on, uh, out at all times.
They're out twenty-four hours a day, yes.
But how many does he have?
He has one.
One.
On first shift, on first shift, he has two. On second shift, he probably has two. And third shift has one.
And with what he's got, they're stretched.
At all times, he's got, he's got no more than two people.
No more than two.
No more than two people with him.
And, and, and again, that just, like I said, you're, that's seven and that's stretched as thin as you can get. Somebody calls in sick, you're down to one. Somebody has vacation, you're down to one. You know, somebody retires, you're down to one officer. So, I mean, you're, to comfortably do it with twenty-four seven, you need ten. I mean, I worked in an agency with ten and that's what it comfortably took to have two officers on shift twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So did Danny, I don't know how many you have right hand, but how many else do you have?
Cretin is a, Cretin as a whole, nineteen miles. We're worth over three million dollars. Let's give it back to the city and get our own police department.
It's an expensive proposition.
I'm not saying it's not, I'm not saying it's not an expensive proposition. I'm saying I personally moved to Grant County because I loved Cretin and it's going to pop.
You have to keep your options open, but I mean, again, we took, we, our calls for service this year, reports are up over two hundred fifty reports from what they were last year. Our accidents reports are up over two hundred accident reports from what they were last year. Our calls for service are up over five hundred calls for service over what they were last year. So, you know, our calls for service are five hundred calls more this year than they were last year and I'm three officers down.
Mayor Brockman, how many officers do you have in Dry Ridge right now and what's their work schedule? How many people are from Dry Ridge Police Department and what's it cost you?
What, what does it cost the city of Dry Ridge?
How, how many officers do you have?
We have two officers.
What, what shifts do they work?
Uh, Rick works from the morning till two o'clock in the afternoon and then Dave rotates. And he doesn't, we do not have twenty-four seven, seven days a week. We are, as he, as he stated, it takes at least seven and you're barely getting by. And you know that. Um, our, our police department is, is, is just there, that's it. I mean, that's just a fact. Uh, years ago, he knows why, it doesn't really matter now, or we would still have Sheriff's Department. Because he did, it costs us a hundred, it costs a hundred thousand dollars per person for a full-time officer.
Does that count their retirement, their insurance?
Their insurance, their pay, at an average of nowhere near what they're making in Boone County. Like I said, we, I talked to Paul, we lost a part-time officer. We were paying him thirty-eight thousand. Or, uh, Taylor Mill come in and give him sixty-eight thousand, four weeks paid vacation, ten days, uh, sick leave and a car to drive home.
So who's the one in Newport here, in the next two to three weeks, he can get a twenty-five thousand dollar year raise and a take-home car. Now, I'm just telling you, the battle you're fighting is unless you're gonna pay anywhere between forty-five and sixty thousand dollars a year, you're hiring officers for other agencies to take them from you.
Mayor, Paul, I agree with what you're saying about the problems in Harvester's. I live there and I know what you're saying is the truth. But we've had in Cretin our own police department and for the reasons the mayor here said and the rest of us know, was it didn't work. Not because we didn't have good people being the policemen, it was because we didn't have enough. Two or three guys can only do a very small amount, like you're stating. My thing is, I'm tickled to death with what the council and the mayor's done by getting the sheriff's department to give us one person a shift. That's outstanding. Now, the problem with that is, is we don't have enough deputies to go to.
Correct.
And that's exactly what I personally would like to see. And that's something I want to talk to Brian about and see what it would take and how we could get more hires. I know how it would take. I understand that. And I know it's not gonna happen overnight, but we would deal with the same thing if we tried to get our own.
Correct.
Now, you know, we do cough, cough up a little money for their expenditures, there being the sheriff's department. We may have to come up with more and have to come to the council to get that. But that's something we need to work on and that's why I'm saying to you. But as far as us having our own police department, I think we're just parking up the wrong tree there. We're chasing a shadow that will not.
Okay, then, then what would you suggest we do? Because we're not getting the, uh, police coverage like we need.
He's suggesting to do two policemen twenty-four hours a day instead of one.
One.
And that in the long run will cost us less money than having ten on the payroll.
And she's absolutely right with what, what I'm saying. But we have to go through the county to get them to help pay and do and wait. But we've gotta be patient. Now, I like the idea of a couple of people save cameras. Now personally, me and the wife talking about, we've done picked out the system we want to put up at our house. The great thing about that is they can come back later and look at it and do it if it's not a life-threatening thing. If it's life-threatening on my property, I'm gonna win.
It's just like this, I've got three, uh, three deputies out right now. I've got one south. I've got one assigned to the city of Cretin.
I know, and that's what I'm saying.
And I've got one in the middle.
I don't want anybody to get mad and think that we're going to appreciate all the getting.
I'm not trying to make anybody mad, oh, no.
You're not gonna make me mad, I got thick skin. I've been in this twenty-five years, you're not gonna make me mad.
Well, you better have thick skin. No, what I'm saying to you is, I, I just, I'm more, I'm worried about the city of Cretin. I'm worried about what's happening with police coverage. Um, what, what can, what do you suggest?
I mean, every agency is fighting the battle of being shorthanded. I mean, I talked to the city of Florence today and they pay, they're starting out at sixty-seven thousand dollars a year. They're short. You know, so, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I'd love to be up to twenty deputies, but feas- feasibly or financially, I don't think that's an option right now. You know, I mean, we get three new hires, that puts us up to fifteen. That puts one more guy on every shift. You know, that puts me with four guys on first, four or five guys on second, and four to five guys on thirds, which will give me more options. You know, but that's a year away. I mean, you're talking eleven months before they actually take the first call their own. When we put the application process out there, we had zero applicants with experience that I or that the sheriff was comfortable with hiring. So that's why we had to go with the new hire.
Well, let me ask you this, Todd, and, and I'm speaking for the people. I, I really respect the police, you know, as, as a dispatcher for KSP many years and and worked for KSP. I know, I know what you go through and I know the calls that come in from Grant County. But my, my thing that bothers me is fiscal court only gives, what, five hundred thousand to the sheriff's office?
I have to look at the button.
And then we give almost three hundred thousand, so that's eight, eight hundred thousand dollars. So we would expect more because we're paying twice. We're paying county and property taxes, which has went up and is quite, quite expensive now. And also, uh, city taxes and those taxes go, um, if we can get, I'm hoping that the general assembly passes that alcohol tax. If we can get that alcohol tax passed, doesn't that tax, that, some of that tax money can go to the law enforcement to help compensate?
Yeah, I would assume that, yeah.
Yeah, I believe that's the way the law's written, so.
ABC fees, the license can be used for law enforcement, anything public service, fire, life, pursuit of fire police.
Yeah, we get a tax on this alcohol and, and excuse me, if anybody, you know.
We're talking, you're talking about the point-of-use sales tax?
Yes, yes.
To, to put it in perspective, I talked to Mayor Skinner about six months ago about what that's worth. All Williamstown's just twenty-five thousand dollars.
He told me fifty-four thousand.
What now?
He told me fifty-four thousand. But you can go up to five percent, uh, you know, on that, on that sales tax for alcohol. And that can compensate law enforcement. So it's something that maybe that we counsel.
It's a piece of.
Yeah, it could be, could be used that way. You know, the general assembly is supposed to pass that for all cities. And, uh, we need to reach out to Savannah and some different ones because only some cities could, could use it because, uh, Williamstown was able to do that. We was in a, we was in a slot where we couldn't file for that. Uh, we, you know, it was, you know, we didn't start till later, uh, with the, um, ABC. So that's something we can look at. But, you know, our, our thing is, you got Dry Ridge Police Department, you have Williamstown Police Department, you have KSP. But you don't have Corrith, Dry Ridge, Jonesville, Mount Zion, all the different areas paying, um, paying into the fiscal court for extra patrol or extra help. But we are, so.
They don't have an officer assigned to there.
But if they get a call, you have to go anyway.
Yeah, we have to go there, correct. And, and that would be how it would work too. You know, if you decided not to pay the two ninety, I mean, we wouldn't, we would not assign an officer here, but we would still come to you the call.
We wanna do our part, but if somebody calls and there's an officer in town, what do you say, three minutes for them to get there?
If, yeah, yeah, around that, depending on where you're, I mean, Cretin's, I don't know how many square miles it is, it's not, it's not a huge city. You know, but, I mean, if I'm at Cretin Park to get to Harvester's, depending on traffic flow, it's gonna take me two to three minutes to get there from inside the city.
So, uh, that's something that maybe we can look into with the, uh, putting that tax on the alcohol.
It's just a suggestion, because, you know, cities spend a lot of time at, um, looking at all their, all their ordinances and their growth for long-term. But a lot of cities have the same problems. As part of the growth of the city, everybody looks at infrastructure and all that. But the police department, security of the city is an infrastructure thing, but nobody puts it in their budget. They deal with the budget when they gotta pay the sheriff's department, but nobody says, ten years from now, we need this. So what the council might want to consider is, as you, as you're planning your year or whatever, putting together a long-term, in business terms, a five-year plan that says that Cretin not only needs the sheriff's department, but technology outdoes manpower. in business terms, a five-year plan that says that Cretin not only needs the sheriff's department, but technology outdoes manpower. Okay, so cameras, you know, Williamstown, Dry Ridge, everybody's got cameras, you go to Florence, you go move in Florence without somebody seeing it. But Cretin doesn't have a big budget, you can't do it overnight. So the, the council may want to make a plan, a three-year, five-year plan, that we're gonna continue the thing with the sheriff's department and at the same time, we're gonna try to build into our budget to do, like you added some security to the park. You know, the, the harvesters is a main problem. The, the thing I see as, as my career as a real estate broker, okay, the, the, one of the flaws that Cretin has, and I live in Cretin, one of the flaws that Cretin has is Cretin is an apartment-based community. When you have apartment-based community, you have transit, people move in and out all the time. And the growth of the area is gonna dictate that, especially right now when you don't have a lot of inventory of homes for people to buy, they're gonna stay in apartments. Unfortunately, you, you have circumstance that comes with that. A lot of, a lot of cities have put ordinances in place to help put the, uh, the owners of the apartment complexes and stuff to make them put something in the pool if they've got bad actors living in their apartment complex. So they, they can, if, if he gets called three times, four times or whatever for the same apartment complex, same person, that report, you could have an ordinance that finds that building manager to either eliminate that tenant or start paying fines. That way, that way they clean up and that's what Florence has had to do, Covington does, Newport does it, I cover twelve counties. So I, every county fights through these problems, you know, uh, but I think one of the things you may want to throw on the table is on this three to five-year plan, is where do we go? You aren't gonna fix this harvester thing overnight unless you just set the cruiser there and they're gonna run down the street, they're gonna see the cruiser, they're gonna slam on brakes. The lady's gonna run down the street as soon as she can see you pick up the phone. It's a combination of cameras and stuff, okay, I have guns, dogs and cameras in my house, okay? So you break in my house, it's your choice. I'll, I'll explain it later, you know? But there's a lot of systems and, and people don't know, you know, I was trying to pull up some stuff on the ordinance with, with the City of Cretin, and I couldn't pull up all the ordinances I wanted to see, that's a computer stuff. So it's a growing thing, but can cameras, you know, let people know, you could go buy an Amazon Blink camera system that you have on your phone for two hundred and forty-nine dollars. And it walks you through it. And I can sit here and turn it off and on whichever camera I want.
They got four cameras at Walmart with the hard drive and my, uh, and ours, four cameras, hard drive, three hundred something dollars.
The Blink, the Blink thing, three cameras, it doesn't have any monitoring fees per month at all, the three cameras, it's totally free on the internet. You buy the system, you put it up, because a lot of people, you know, they don't want an ADP two hundred dollar bill anymore. But so, you know, my worthless information, I would, in your long-term planning, I think it's, it's a cooperative thing to have the community involved, but you need to have the cameras, you need to have the sheriff's department. Officers cannot be everywhere every minute. Criminals are out far outnumbered the officers, you gotta use the technology with it and you gotta have a communication.
Well, in her case, the, the trespassing complaint, if she has video evidence of that, that's gonna get a charge. That's gonna get either a summons or a warrant issued for whatever woman you're talking about.
I'll tell you what I had to do.